Call to order for the seven thirty Wednesday, August twenty sixth, public hearing. First item on tonight's agenda is to consider an act on setting the sewer use fee for the current year. Prior to a motion on this, I've asked Joe DiVanzo to walk us through the projected cash flow if we were to leave the rate flat at four dollars and forty-five cents.
Okay, hopefully, everybody could hear me. To leave the rate at four dollars and forty-five cents, which is the current rate, we would wind up based on the twenty twenty usage that Chris has sent out to everyone, would generate six million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And there's another ten thousand dollars, small number, that would also get generated. Those are the zero accounts, the accounts that Aquarian could not read the meters. I think there are about a hundred and ten of those or so, Chris, give or take.
Correct, yeah.
So, the big numbers we have to cover is our, is the five point seven million dollar department budget, and the additional servicing of the bond, the one bond we have floated, to cover the two projects that we're doing for Sacred Heart, the pumps and the main force up, up this, the university there. So if I take the five point seven and the servicing of the five point three million bond, it comes up to six point one million dollars. So obviously, by just taking the four forty-five times the existing rate, times the existing usage, comes up to six point seven nine six million, so clearly we'd cover it. So the next thing I did was I said, we also have the project that we're pretty close with down at the new Metro Center, which is projected at this point to be six point three million dollars. So we'd need another three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to cover the servicing on that bond. So to cover that and adding it to the original five point seven for the department, the three twenty-one for the Sacred Heart project, as I call it, it would bring us to six point three million, six hun- six point three eight two million. So clearly, the six seven nine six would cover that with a buffer of four hundred thousand. Now, in addition to that, we are to collect one million dollars from Sacred Heart once we finish the pump stations. So that's sort of in reserve, that would probably just go into the, our bank account. So that, that's the logic with keeping the rate the same as last year.
It's a great asset, having a retired CFO on the commission. Are there any questions or comments?
One thing I just want to point out, we do need to come up with an, either a solution or a, an agreement as far as what we're going to use for the three-year average or the highest rate, one or the other, just for billing purposes. So when we send the bills out and let QDS know, on the spreadsheet, we, we need to let them know which way we want to go.
Can you explain that, Chris? That's the first I hear. A three-year average?
Yep, we got the unmatched accounts back from Aquarian. There was about roughly about a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty accounts.
Okay.
They came back. We did, we did what we normally do, a three-year average, and then we also took the highest reading and broke it down. So there's two columns at the end on the spreadsheet that I attached. One comes up to ten thousand, six hundred and twelve CCFs, the other one is eleven thousand, seven hundred and one. So, you know, if we're going to take the three-year average or the highest rate of the, you know, the, the breakdown, we need to know, you know, we, we have to put some kind of verbiage into the bill when we mail them out, so that the, you know, the homeowner knows how we build it.
Okay, just, just to clarify, because I got a little confused when Chris jumped in. What I was talking about was just the setting of the rates. We have, what Chris was just talking about, a hundred and ten customers that we could not read the meter, Aquarian could not read the meter, so those, we need a different calculation as to how we're going to charge them. So, so we've got two separate issues going on right now. What we want to do for the current, the rate we're proposing, plus how the TEP methodology we want to use for coming up with charging those hundred and ten folks. So we've got two different things, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, one is kind of a seven million dollar issue and the other is roughly a ten thousand dollar issue.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's stay on the main issue. Is, is there a motion relative to the setting of, of the rate?
I guess I'll make a motion to keep the rate the same as last year.
And I'll, I can second it, it's Nancy.
Wait, we have to come with a exact number?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
If you don't want to have a discussion, okay. Aye, no problem.
Aye.
Opposed? No, I think that was unanimous. Okay.
Yep.
The next item relative to public hearing.
Can I just ask, you asked about a discussion, is there anything that you felt you needed to add? I'm curious.
No, just, just procedurally, that was it. I don't, when I sit next to Mark, I give him one of these, an elbow, and he knows.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Copy that, it seemed to me, it just seemed to me not controversial, I was curious if there was something.
Yep, but just wanted to open it up, just in case. And we didn't, you know, this is the public meeting, we should probably, I don't know if we have any public on that you want to ask for discussion. That was my point.
Yeah. Yes, we've asked the, both the public to respond in advance, and if there's any public who is on, it's difficult to tell, it's a number of call-in users I have in front of me. Feel free to unmute yourself and, and speak, and we'll be sure to listen. Okay, next item on tonight's public hearing agenda is to consider and act upon a revision of the current inflow and infiltration. I mean, we noted I and I abatement policy and rate structure. The proposed rate is four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per single-family dwelling for developments which result in increased sanitary sewer, sewer flows into the town of Fairfield sewer system. There's also a memo been put out on this that breaks that down into what that would equate to for studio and one bedrooms, as well as three bedrooms. And Chris, what does that come out to be per gallon? Is that around twenty-two dollars a gallon for projected use? Yes.
Joe's raising his hand.
I, I just wanted to remind you, we had the second part of that first resolution, the methodology for those hundred and ten people. We should probably take, take that up in the breath resolution before we jump to the I and I.
Yeah, to me, that was a department issue. I, I'm not sure that's a public hearing issue. That, that's something that we will come up with a methodology, and those who think that they are paying too much will be coming in over the course of the next year, I'm certain of it. So staying on the I and I fee, is there, so twenty-two dollars per gallon is what the new proposed fee is. Is there any questions or comments on that? We have, we've talked about this relatively extensively over the last few months. Okay, there are motion. Joe?
I'd like to make a motion to, to raise the rate, the, our I and I rate to four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per single-family dwelling, the developments which result in the increased sanitary sewer flow.
There a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Aye.
Let's, let's circle back now, and prior to closing the public hearing, the, Chris, the proposed methodology on those meters that we could not access is, there, there's a proposal to go with the, the, kind of the, the average or the highest over the next three years. If someone comes in with, once their, Aquarian does have access to their home and can read their meter, do they have the ability to come to, to, to the desk, to the counter, and, and ask for an adjustment?
We would do, we would have to do an adjustment over the phone, but it would have to be based on some data that Aquarian would be able to provide us. Now, Aquarian has not been able to provide the data, so we really have nothing to go on, so.
So, I, I get it, some people don't want Aquarian in their, in their home, and, and they don't have meters that can be read from outside the home, so. Of the seventeen thousand or so users, we're a, a few hundred, so it's kind of best guess as to what that fee is, subject to further execution over, over time. Okay, and so the, Joe, you're probably-
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
Please.
Is, is there, can you remind us how we, we've approached these situations in the past?
Usually in the past, we would take the three-year average, based on the bill, and, and figure it that way. I, I would, we went back and forth, you know, internally, trying to come up with a solution, and there were two solutions that we came with, either we take the three-year average or the highest of the two, which would be last year's read or the, the highest of the average, which reflects in the last column, so. You know, we, we basically come out pretty close to the same figure for consumption purposes, but, you know, we, we kind of need to know, you know, if we're going to use the average. My only fear is if we use the highest for one, and we use an average for somebody else, are they gonna, you know, i- is it gonna conflict?
Right, you, you end up having people play the, which is less, try to, if we allow both.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the mechanics of getting a hundred and fifty separate bills out and what the, what the qualification is with that bill. Joe?
Just so everybody knows, from the order of magnitude, taking the three-year average generated ten thousand dollars for the, for us as a rate, and the, taking the higher of the three-year average or the, of the last year's rate, last year's number, generated eleven thousand dollars. So we're talking about a thousand dollars here. I mean, we're not, not in, not in talk about dollars.
Can I just correct for one second? It's, the, that, those are CCFs. So if you actually do the figure, if you actually do the figure, it comes out, it's forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars, based on the, the four dollars and forty-five cents.
Right.
And the, and then it comes out to, if we use the highest average, it comes out to fifty-two thousand, so you're, you know, five thousand difference.
Recognizing that you're the one who's going to take the phone calls from people who think they've been overcharged, and, and, and what, what, what works best for the department, what would you recommend?
Me personally, I would say use the three-year average just to stay consistent with what we've done in the past. But if we want to use the highest of the two, you know, we, we can put some verbiage in, and we have to send that out with the bill to, you know, clarify things for the resident.
Just keep it simple, for five thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay. I see thumbs up. Chris, that's, that's the, that's the direction. I don't know, you need a formal vote on that.
Okay, no, I, no, we can, we can take it internally, so enjoy it.
Okay, great. So unless there's any further comments or questions, we're going to adjourn the public hearing.
I move to adjourn.
Nancy second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, great. Thank you all for participating in that. We now move forward to our regularly scheduled WPCA meeting for this evening, Wednesday, August twenty-sixth. And unless there's any proposed changes to the agenda, we will go with what we have, which begins with the approval of the July twenty-second, twenty-twenty meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve them. Oh, I'm sorry, got it headed myself.
That's okay. There any comments or questions on those?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, the, moving on.
That's right, good to have you here this month, Jerry.
Uh, new business. Yeah, first item in front of us, relatively new, I think within the last couple days, this has come in, to consider an act on a request to connect seventeen units, thirty-four bedrooms, eight-eight-eight Old Field Road to the Fairfield sewer system. I must confess, I have not had a chance to review this, I think something came over today or yesterday. Chris, why don't you tell us what, what the current status of this is, and how we get ourselves into a position to, for next month, applying on it?
Yep, so, yeah, like you said, the report came in early last week. I've reviewed it, not substantially, but enough to, you know, to, to understand it. The applicant is applying to connect seventeen units, thirty-four bedrooms into our system. They've done the flow monitoring. A few comments that I have are, I just sent out the site plan this afternoon, which was attached with the report. On the report, everything's listed in cubic feet per second, and we like to keep everything as gallons per day. So it's just a, a simple conversion, but I'd like to see that on the report, just to stay uniform with past projects. Other than that, it, that's, you know, everything looks good, but, you know, I think we would need a little more time to review the, the application, so.
Yeah, okay, well, why don't we maintain protocol and have the department gather the information, review it, send it on to the commission, and we will, comments and questions before moving forward. We have a handout from Joe.
Yeah, just a question, is there anybody on the call that can supply additional information, Chris?
I'm sorry?
Is there, is there anyone on the call?
Yeah, I believe so, yep. Is somebody on the call from Co-Despoty Associates that would like to speak?
Yes. Yes, I'm not sure if, if, am I muted?
No, you're not muted.
You're coming through level clear.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, this is Robert Weeway, I'm a professional engineer with Co-Despoty and Associates, and we're working on the, on the project on behalf of the applicant. I think we've, we've given all the material that Chris had originally asked for, we certainly have no issues with changing the summary tables over to gallons per day, it's like you said, just a matter of, of a conversion. But basically, we're looking at putting in six buildings, three triplexes, and one duplex with a total of twenty-four bedrooms, and based upon the flow rates, we're looking at about thirty-two, about, about thirty-three hundred ga- gallons a day that will come out of the project. When, when we did the calculations, we did not take any credit for the existing two homes that are on the property. So the calculations that we did, I believe, are somewhat conservative in, in that nature. And then based upon our flow analysis, there were, the monitoring was done at two sites, one just downstream of the site, and then a second site on the trunk line down at eighty-seven James Street. And the analysis at both locations indicate that there's more than ample capacity to handle the, the flow from the proposed development that's, that's being presented to you tonight.
Robert, can, can I ask you, when you did your, when you did your flow monitoring, did we have any rain events?
The, the flow monitoring, we were brought in after the flow monitoring was done, so we weren't, we weren't involved when that was done. From looking at the flow monitoring, it was done by Flow Assessment Services between March seventeenth and March twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty. From looking at the data that was within the report, it didn't appear that there was any substantial rainfall events dur- during that period of time, unless I'm missing something in the report on that.
Yeah, I didn't, it didn't look like.
That's the data that, that was provided to us.
Okay.
I can weigh in on that. There were two rain events within a week period, two half-inch rain events during that, during that rain, so that's why they pulled the meters out and, you know, submitted the report to the owner, so. And the owner then submitted the report to the engineering company, so. Usually, the engineering company does the, the flow monitoring, in this case, the owner took that upon himself to do, so.
Okay, so Chris, and the other, the only other question I had, when, when, do you know when the owner's planning on breaking ground? How long?
Well, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of up to you guys. We, we are in the process of getting the plans finished up and getting them ready for submission to other town agencies. It's our understanding that you guys are the first step in doing that, so we did start the process with the WPCA. We will be moving forward with zoning commission, once we, once we hopefully receive approval from you guys, and starting that process along the way.
And do you also have to go to conservation?
I'm not sure, because we have, there's no inland wetlands on the property, and the wetlands that are out there are, are title wetlands.
Right.
So that's really going to fall more with DEEP's jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good dialogue. We look forward to having that final submission and taking action next month.
Okay, yeah, if there's any additional information that, that might be required, I'm sure Chris will get back in touch with us, but I'll, I'll get the report amended with that one sheet to do the conversion on the numbers. And we thank you for your time, and I guess we'll, we'll hook up again next month. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to old business, we have in front of us to consider an act on a request by Jay Edwards and Associates to connect, it says forty apartments, but with forty-five bedrooms, it sounds like that number may have changed. This, this has, this has been in front of us for a few meetings now. I, I missed one, so I'm going to ask Chris to kind of update the, the timeline of this and where we are now prior to acting on this, this evening.
Okay, so we've had, like Mark said, this has been in front of us a couple of months now. We have since had Wright Pierce do a report on the line to see if there is adequate capacity on it. Upon doing so, we've had a code enforcement meeting last, or two weeks ago, to go over the project internally with all the departments. Submitted to us prior to that code enforcement meeting was a set of plans dated, let's see, six twenty-five twenty. The plans that were previously submitted to the commission were from February twenty-second, I believe, twenty-twenty, and they did not show the basement plan on this set of plans that were submitted. On the set of plans that were submitted, there is a sump pump and an oil-water sep- or several drains that drain to a sump pump and an oil-water separator that also go into the sewer system, which is going to add quite a bit of flow to our line, it's not, you know, we don't have an, it's an unforeseen amount, we have no idea how much is going to be down there. Now, this area is very prone to-
Hold on, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you, Chris. Have we ever approved a project with a sump pump coming in?
No, we have with an oil-water separator, but no, no sump pump, so.
Okay.
So this plan, this, this area downtown is prone to flooding, there's, there's significant flooding issues down there. So, you know, with this project, you know, we don't know how much flow is going to be added to the, you know, the system. Wright Pierce did the report on it, you know, and they're saying that the sewer is at seventy-nine point two percent capacity. Good engineering practice is to keep it about eighty percent. I went through and did some research on this and came up with rain events from last March to see-
Chris, hold on a second. The, the, the eighty percent was with a peaking factor of two point five, which is, is a, is a new number for us. I, I don't, you know, I don't recall ever approving a project with a two point five. It, it seems like we've, a lot of things have been manipulated to come in under that eighty percent, including a rain event that's at one point six. So what happens, have, have there been rain events over one point six? And what happens, what would happen if, if such an event were to occur?
Well, in the past eighteen months, from the data that I've gathered, there's been ten rain events of an inch and a half or more, and of those, there were three, there were almost three inches or more. And it's all in the report on the data that I've submitted. So, you know, if we were to get a three-inch rain event, that's almost double what, you know, was accounted for in the flow monitoring. So we could substantially bypass, and that's stated in the Wright Pierce report as well.
Yeah, Wright Pierce identifies that as a risk, and I think we, we've all been in downtown Fairfield during an extreme rain event, and we know that it's very difficult to even navigate a car in that intersection. Is there someone from Jay Edwards on the line?
Yes, Larry Edwards from Jay Edwards Associates.
Okay, Larry, help, help us understand what's, what's going on here and, and and the situation.
Okay, I think the one thing that seems, as far as the, the rain events and the eighty percent capacity, we basically are going off of what you have historically set as your, your threshold for, for having capacity, and that's been eighty percent. The one thing I want to make sure and it's, and have everybody understand is these drains that we are putting into the sewer, they are the ones that are under, under the cover. And DEP has told us in past projects that they do, that we have to put drains in and that they have to go into an oil separator, and the oil separator is, they require it to go into the sewers. There is no, this is strictly undercover, this is in the basement, this isn't the footing drains for the basement, it is strictly the drains that are going to be in the basement level and also on the upper level that's undercover. And those drains are going to see melt off the cars, and that's really the extent of it. There is no large amount of, of flow coming off of these, off of that drain, and I'm sure you've, you've approved these before. I think the thing that we have gotten stuck with is, with this in the basement, we have no choice but to pump it out in some form. So that's why we're proposing a small sump pump, and that we could eliminate. I mean, maybe we can just pump, have them, have the oil separator pumped on a, on a, you know, so many month basis. We're not trying to get anything through here that isn't what's required, and it's not a high-flow situation in terms of those drains. They're just there as a requirement to pick up whatever is melt off of the cars.
When this was initially presented, there was a thought that the six-inch pipe that, that runs through this property would, would need to be upgraded to an eight-inch pipe. Has any analysis been done on that?
The six-inch pipe on our property? Or are you talking what's in the road? I believe it's.
What's in the road?
No, we have not done any. Is it a six-inch pipe or an eight-inch pipe in the road?
It's an eight-inch.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So we're not looking, you know, ours is going to be totally redone, so we're going to have new services coming out of the building. So anything on our property is going to be upgraded to whatever current standards are required. I don't, I, I don't handle that. That's going to be the building, plumbing contractor to indicate what the size pipe will go out for the service. But, you know, that's, that's, would be any building that's going to go in. It's going to be the same scenario.
Still left?
No.
Can I ask Larry? Larry, from what I heard from the other commission, there's going to be two levels of parking below ground? Is that the plan?
No.
I haven't seen.
No.
No.
No, no, no. There's one, the building will be on, on this, what would be the second floor the building starts. The first floor will be at grade, but underground. Part of, part of it will be under, undercover. And then there's a second level that will be a basement parking on the lower level. So there's two, two levels of parking, but one of them is at grade, one of them is at basement level.
Okay, so Larry, what you said was what we'd see as a flow would be just the melting off cars. But if the parking is below grade, wouldn't there be flooding potential from rainstorms and things?
No. The ramps and all the access to it is undercover, so there isn't any, there's, there's nowhere the water would flow into the basement. And it would, there would be no reason for that. There's doors, there's at-grade access, and it's covered all the way from the curb into the, or the sidewalk into the, into the building. So there's nothing that's exposed.
Thank you.
Can I just add something to that? So I've been down there when, in large rain events where the water was over the curbs. In the event that we get a large rain event, that foundation or basement is going to essentially become a bathtub. What is your means of getting rid of the water if that, if that basement fills with water?
Well, if it filled with water in terms of, from a flood event, it would have to be pumped out. But the, the architect is designing it that it's going to be a sealed basement that won't have any drainage required as far as the, the footing drains. And all that we're doing is, you know, picking up what water comes in. And, yeah, if you get three, three feet of water in all of downtown Fairfield, yeah, I mean, that basement's going to be flooded just like any other basement that's in Fairfield. And the only way to get it out is going to be to pump it out. But that would go into the storm drain, just not into your sanitary sewers. Not that the town engineer would want that to happen either, but, but again, any, any building that has a basement, and if the water, if the water reaches the point where it runs into the basement, that is going to have to be pumped out in some way, shape, or form. But again, that's an emergency situation. That's, that's not a standard operating situation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because I'm trying to catch up, because this is all still pretty new to me, so forgive me if this question isn't relevant. But it seems to me when you're working on a new project, to operate under the assumption of, oh, well, the only option is we're going to have to pump it out in an unusual event, when it actually does flood there quite a bit. I don't understand why that is a, a good, a good way to start something when it's, when it's new.
We do, you know, it, it isn't like we are going, we have the, from the gutter of the road up to the entrance to the, to the garage is, there's a six-inch lift there. So, you know, it would have to get over to that point. But again, this isn't a flood zone. It isn't, you know, we've constructed everything in accordance with the requirements of the town. And as I said, it would be no different than a residential building, you know, a single-family house that puts a basement in. If it's not in the flood zone, it doesn't have to comply with any flood protection beyond what would be normal construction. And that's exactly what we're doing in this case. And we don't anticipate that that's going to be a, a situation that's going to happen very often.
Yeah. I'm gonna, Dennis, I know that, I'm gonna ask you to unmute, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a point from your report dated August 7th. And again, it looks like we're shoehorned this in, given that, you know, 79.2% capacity, rain event, not more than 1.63%. Your, your point in your report, we do not have any data for a larger rainstorm in the springtime when groundwater levels are high. This will likely further decrease pipe capacity and may lead to surcharging. What does that mean, surcharging in that part of town?
Well, it's, so let me explain a couple of things in my memo. With respect to the oil water separator and sump pump, I, I did not fully understand what it was for, and that makes sense, what the applicant is saying. However, I'm not sure, I, I, it's, to me, that should be a stormwater oil water separator, and it should be pumped to the storm drain, not the sewer. So I, I would need to check on that. But with the surcharging, what it means is whether this, whether this development connects or not, you have, there's potential for issues down there, you know, during extreme wet weather. So it's, it's not, you know, there, there, the impact of this particular connection, it's not necessarily going to increase or decrease that chance. It's you, it's the fact that the pipe is, is almost at capacity now currently, and it should be investigated further, the entire line, not specific to this connection. And that's what I was trying to say, I guess.
Yeah. Let me ask you, why are we not investigating the upgrading of that, of this line versus trying to create hypothetical situations where there, there may not be a catastrophic event in downtown Fairfield?
Yeah, I, you'd have to ask the WPCA that. I mean, I don't, you know.
Okay.
Something else, I, I want to weigh in on something, another factor, changing gears a little bit. In their application, they submitted a architectural drawings. On the architectural drawings, it shows one bedroom plus a den. They've accounted for one-bedroom units, which is a standard flow rate. Our fear is that they're going to change, those, those one-bedroom plus the den could potentially become a two-bedroom apartment with more, more added flow to, to the system.
For sure. Okay.
This is Chris Russo for the applicant. Can I just respond to that real quick?
Sure.
You know, that, to, in order to convert a one-bedroom to a den, to a two-bedroom, I mean, that would be a zoning violation. I mean, that's, what we're going for to get approved. If we, if we did that and operated outside of our approval, would be a zoning violation. So our, our approval would restrict that from becoming a two-bedroom.
Yeah.
It should be no different than if somebody else did that. I mean, there, there's other projects, like the one on Uncle Road that had lofts, and it would be the same thing if those lofts were converted into, converted into, into an additional bedroom. It'd be out, it'd be out of line with the approval, and it'd be a violation. And when we accounted on that project, we just listed them as two bedrooms.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions?
Let me, let me ask Chris, Chris or Dennis, what would it take for us to get a, an estimate of what the cost of the replacement line, that eight-inch line, and how long would it take to replace it?
Construction-wise or to get an estimate?
Well, to get an estimate and then, I guess to get an estimate, that's the first step, how the cost.
Okay, so to get an estimate, we can have an estimate next month, by next month, you know, to do that.
Can we get an estimate on the cost of the replacement line?
We could.
I assume it's not digging at the street, it's just sort of like pushing a new 10-inch through?
No, there's a lot involved because it's, it crosses the post road, so there's a lot of utilities in the post road.
Oh, okay.
We have the 345 KV line, there's gas lines and water lines, and, you know, there, there's substantial amount of infrastructure in that road.
Okay, thank you.
So we can get a quote.
Jerry. What was the question I heard about the, about the bedrooms? Someone said something about the bedrooms?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a hypothetical that I think we, we have, I think we have enough information in front of us as, 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 as presented to, uh.
I mean, that doesn't come into play for us. I mean, it's. Lost, no, I'm saying from lost converting to bedrooms?
No, that's a, that's a different project up, up the road that would just put further stress on this, on this, on this line. Additional comments, questions? All right, why don't we act on the motion in front of us, which is to consider an act on a request by J. Edwards and Associates to connect 40 apartments with, now 43 bedrooms? 43 bedrooms of 15 Uncle Road to the Fairfield Sewer System. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Jerry, I'm sorry, you were in favor or opposed?
I was in favor.
One in favor? Christian?
Did we have a second?
I'm sorry, was there a second, correct?
I'll second it.
Joe second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Christian and Jerry, opposed?
Aye.
Mark, Joe, Nancy.
Paul and Nancy.
Okay. Continue on. Next item on tonight's agenda is the discussion on Class II food establishments to require a grease trap. Chris, there's, we discussed this last month, why don't you bring us up to speed on both the Class II food establishments and the waived fog permit? What the state has given us some guidance and what our proposal is going forward on this?
So we did touch base with the state. I talked to Eliana. She referenced that we have the jurisdiction of classifying these restaurants as needed based on the grease disposal. So we've taken the Class II restaurants and the waived restaurant and went through and figured out which ones have a grease trap and which ones don't. And it's on the spreadsheet that you see. The ones that do not have a grease trap don't really generate much grease. You know, it's, it's basically grab-and-go food from like a convenience store or something like that. The ones that do, you know, are classified on here. Our thought was, in which most municipalities, what I was explaining by, from Eliana as well, from the state, they've went to Class III and IVs. Most municipalities went to a Class III and IV, just to clarify things. We still have Class II, III, and IV. We also have a waived permit. So our thought was to get rid of the waived permit, which isn't really a generator, there's 48 restaurants that have $50 apiece. And we classify the Class II restaurants that have grease traps as a Class III and Class IV, just to streamline everything.
Makes sense to me. Who will, what will the process be of determining, you know, some are obvious, but, you know, for instance, the Save the Children Cafe, does somebody go in and inspect it?
Um, we were, they were inspecting it. We're, we're using, we're requiring now them to submit their grease receipts. We've, it's a new process. We're getting a new permitting system as well, so it will be a new process. But we're probably about 75% there with, you know, compliance of people submitting their grease receipts from the haulers.
Okay. Okay. Any decision? Any comments, questions, and/or decision needed by the commission?
All right. The only question I would have is, is, can I?
Sure.
I noticed more and more of these food trucks are showing up. What are we, what are they doing? They're just, I guess, throwing it away?
Well, it, it, that's a, that's a tough scenario, so we just had this discussion as well. A lot of the food trucks are coming from out of town, so they have to be licensed in town, but they're not supposed, we don't know if they're disposing of their grease, you know, it, it, let's just say a food truck comes to Bridgeport, from Bridgeport to Fairfield, they're not, you know, they're supposed to be getting rid of their grease somewhere. And they're licensed with the health department, but we don't have any regulation or any control of where they're getting rid of their grease. So that, that's kind of a little bit of, you know, a sticking point that we're going to have to work through, so.
Dennis, is that something we can? Yeah, I was just going to say that sounds like that's something we should work through.
Yeah, we're going to have to look into it. So it's fairly new because we're, you know, the amount of food trucks and whatnot. But, you know, other than chasing the food truck down the street, you know, we have to come up with a scenario or a solution of where they're getting rid of their, how they're disposing of their grease. Do we not give them a license, a food license? We'd have to work with the health department to, you know, come up with some solution. You know, they could be in Fairfield in the morning and then go to, you know, Norwalk in the afternoon, you know, for, for something. So, you know, we don't know per se where they're getting rid of their grease.
Chris?
Yes.
This is Joe. Isn't it more likely they're putting it down a storm drain than somehow getting it to a sewer pipe?
So that's what I was just thinking, because like Tasty Oak, for instance, is like along the water.
Right, but my point is, that's not, that's not our issue, if it's going down a storm drain rather than a sewer pipe for.
But we want it disposed of properly. Correct, I agree.
It's still a town.
It's gross.
Yeah.
Is, is it our purview, Chris?
We have to, I'd have to look into it. We have to check and see if, if we have control over it. That I, I don't know. And I'd like to do some research and see what other towns are doing as far as, you know, monitoring this or controlling it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, thanks for the diligence on that. It's come a long way over the last month. Unless there's any further comments or questions, we have quite, quite a number of updates on the projects. Perhaps we, we move on to that. Probably easily the most active the WPCA has been in the last few decades. So I know that Brian is with another commission, but if Chris, I think Bill Norton's on and Dennis is on, if you could walk us through the updates, we would be grateful for that.
Yep, I'll, I'll start with the, the updates. The Mill River Pump Station Generator, the generator was installed on all the site works complete. They're just waiting for the panel to be wired and the gas line to be run over there. So that, that project is probably about 90% complete right now, so, which is good.
Chris, do you have an end date? Projected end date or no?
We're, it's waiting on the gas company. The, the gas company, as soon as they can get there, I guess they, you know, that's all I can say.
Out of your control, okay.
The wastewater treatment plant generator, there was a change order that was attached for $19,211. That has since been approved. I believe they're waiting for, there needs to be environmental testing done, so this kind of backs into the whole hardening project as well. They've encountered quite a, quite a bit of contaminated material down there. Um, they've encountered a lot, quite a, quite a bit of contaminated material down there, um, that needs to be tested. So, um, anything that gets excavated now per the E, um, the EPA, has to be environmentally tested. So we have to dig a platform to put the pad, um, for the pad for the generator, that soil then has to be tested as well, so. Um, th- there's a little more involved with this, there probably will be change orders coming down the ro- the road, um, but we have not gotten anything yet, so. Um.
That soil was tested yesterday.
Can I, I'm sorry?
Okay.
Chris, can I ask you on these change orders, are they gonna come to us for approval, or?
Yes.
I mean, I mean, you said it's approved, or is it gonna be covered in the contingency of the project?
It's gonna be covered in the contingency. Now, I don't know if this project has a contingency or not, Bill, you might be able to, um, clarify that a little bit, I, I, I think this one, there was either one with the contingency and one did not, so the Mill River or the gener- the, um, wastewater treatment plant, I'm not sure which one did or not.
Okay.
All right, can you hear me? Chris, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, the, the treatment plant did not, the nineteen thousand dollar change order came out of the on, uh, the operation budget.
Oh. So it won't be coming to us then, Bill, is that right?
Uh, I don't believe so, this went through, uh, Brian.
Thank you.
I think, I think what'll happen is, is, if, uh, we go above and beyond, which is probably where we are now.
Right, that's what I was asking. Yeah.
If we have to go into the ready, ready to day fund or some situation like that, I think that's where we will need to go with that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This, this idea of soil testing will come up again tonight and will likely come up quite a bit over the next few years. What's next?
All right, so the hardening, wastewater treatment plant hardening, um, as I explained, they've come across quite a bit of contaminants over there. Um, they are now, they've worked out, the, the project was shut down for a good month. Um, they've come up with a situ- a scenario now to, um, to make a clean corridor, um, around the project where the areas that are contaminated, so everything is being tested prior to driving the steel. Um, they've encountered some large, um, you know, obstructions, concrete, um, tires, stumps, tree stumps. Um, upon removing them, they were contaminated, so they had to, um, you know, clean them, they had to be removed, so there's quite a few change orders in this, you know, um, packet that reflect, um, you know, soil contamination. Um, they're testing all the soil, um, to a certain level, that, or certain depth. Um, they have to leave the, leave it open, there's a twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround for the results. Um, once the results are back to us and it comes back clean, we can reuse that material, it gets stockpiled in a certain area, we put clean material in and we can continue driving the sheeting. Um, if the material is considered contaminated, it then goes to a, a separate pile, it's getting hauled offsite. Um, as of right now, the only place that's taking it is Michigan, so, um, the, the disposal fees are significant because of the distance that we have to go. Um, so, you know.
Hey, Chris? I'm sorry, we have ha- we are disposing of contaminated soils in Stanford and we're bringing it to New Hampshire.
Okay.
So.
And it, I believe it, I'm not a hundred percent correct on this, but i- if it has a certain ratio of the PCBs, it has to go to a different facility.
Yeah, no, no, that's, you are correct, I'm just, what we have is pretty bad too, I just, I'm sure, I'm sure it's all, we talked about going to Michigan too, but it was outrageous, the cost to get it there.
Okay, that's something we could look into, definitely.
I'll, I'll give, yeah, we can talk tomorrow when I see you.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the scenario that we're using right now is that it's going to be trucked to New Jersey and then rail card to, to Michigan.
To Michigan.
But that was based on the cap- contamination level, Dennis, so I don't know where the line is.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it, I'm not, I'm not involved in the project, I just thought I'd offer that information, but I, I can provide to you some more tomorrow and you can look into it.
Dennis, I will ask you to hold that thought as when we get to the East Trunk Interceptor and how we don't get ourselves into a similar position.
Yeah, well, we sample first, so we know what we have.
There you go.
And, and this, listen, I'm not, I've, I've, I've made that mistake before too, it's not uncommon to not test ahead of time, but maybe you know, anything in Fairfield has to be tested ahead of time.
Yeah, particularly if it's around the landfill. Joe?
So just a question to Chris, I believe the hardening project did not have a contingency, and it's starting to accumulate significant costs, is there any discussion on who's going to pay for this?
I, I, I believe there was a contingency, we're, we're getting close, I think there was a million dollar contingency. Um, we're at four hundred and fifty-nine thousand right now, um, but, you know, we're, it, it's quickly dissipating, yeah.
Yeah, I sit in on the committees that, that looks, group that's running the project, so it's gonna go well over a million, easily.
Yes.
So, is there any, any discussion yet as to what's going on? Who's gonna fund this?
I discussed with Brian, he's gonna probably, most likely have to come back for more funding, um, where it's, you know, that's to be determined, I, I, that I don't know, so.
I heard today the state came up with another three hundred.
Yes.
Which was nice, I don't know what agency of the state came up with three hundred, but I suspect that we will need our relationship, you know, the, the benefit of having Nancy on our commission and on the select, I wanna say select woman board, um, to, uh, to help, uh, uh, figure that out, figure out what, what that algorithm is for, uh, who, who pays what in terms of the overage, but I think the, the sooner that's socialized, the better.
To, to that end, um, what conversations are being had with the administration at this point in terms of what the first select woman knows and?
You'd have to talk to Brian, I don't know, you know, I, I'm sure she's purvey on it, but, you know, Bill, you might be able to weigh in as well.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's the conversations that Brian's been having with, uh, with the first select woman and probably Tom.
Tom, yeah.
Tom Brummer, to be clear for anybody.
Yes. Yes.
Not to be mistaken for Tom Flynn, my colleague on the board of Select, on the Board of Select People.
Select people, yeah, there you go. Okay.
Well, of course, happy to convey anything, but I'm, I'm certain that Brian will be able to, to share with us additional insight, and I can also talk to Tom Brummer.
Yeah, and I, I believe that'll happen at some time then, when Brian has some, you know, fine data to, to, to bring to you right now, your hypothetical stuff.
Yeah, a lot of this stuff is being processed. No, go ahead, Nancy.
I was just saying, of course, you know, when we discuss contaminants, regardless of the fact that this is decades long, can, uh, PCBs in the soil, you know, it's, and not related to current, other current issues, it's just, I think the, the sooner the public gets kind of the information of what's happening and how it's being handled.
Yeah, I, I, I feel it's funny that we're cleaning up PCBs from an old federal site, EPA is now making us pay for it.
Yeah, it's a good point. Uh, Joe Manchin, he's sitting in on those weekly calls on Thursday, I just wanna, I wanna thank him for that, I sat in on one, and they, um, they're, they are highly detailed, and I, and the one I sat in was quite productive, so, thanks for doing that, Joe.
They're good, thank you, they're good to be sitting in on and listening.
What's next, guys? Tomorrow's Thursday.
All right, we're, we're done with the hardening, anybody have any questions regarding the change orders? I don't know if they've reviewed them, um, they were attached with the, uh, the packet, so, we can move on to the next topic if, uh, if we're done with that, so. Um, number D, or letter D, sorry, is, um, the update on the Eastern Turnpike Pump Station. So we had a pre-construction meeting with COVAX, they're, they're building the pump station portion. Um, they pla- plan to start mid-September, they're, um, doing their submittals now as we speak, um, and they are going to start the project mid-September. There's a little bit of a timing issue with, um, you know, the, the force main, we have to get the force main started before they can go in and, and start their process, so. Um, to carry over into the next one, which is the same project, the force main, the contractor started installing the pipe, um, they're across the road now, we've got about a hundred and fifty feet, maybe two hundred feet, um, of, of pipe in the ground. They had a good day, productive day today, um, I think they got about seventy-five feet in today, which is good. Um, so there's a lot of utilities in the road that they had to get across, which was very slow going, took about a week to get through that section, but we, um, we were able to make it, so. Um, we have a progress meeting tomorrow, so, you know, we will, um, you know, update if any, anything comes up, so.
Chris?
Yes.
Just a quick question, did Sacred Heart pay their first twenty percent of that million dollars?
No, I was just thinking of that before the meeting.
Who was following them?
We will have to follow up with them, but yes, so, um, no.
Boss laughing, but he knows I want that money.
Right, I agree, so they have to come forth, so, I was just thinking of that, so.
Okay.
Something we have to follow up on. Um. All right, uh, letter S, um, status update on the East Trunk Interceptor relocation, Dennis, I, I don't know if you wanna take over and kinda give us an update, um, on that project?
Yeah, so this is the, the re- cardinal review of the cardinal design, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, we have done our own quantity takeoff of the job, and we've done our own independent cost estimate of the project as designed, and what we found is their cost estimate as designed is pretty, pretty accurate. Um, the one thing that we struggle with is the sheeting. It looks like they carried the sheeting costs to drive the sheets all the way down twenty-five feet in some areas, but there's rock at eight feet, so you would really only need to drive the sheets to the top of the rock, so. I'm, I'm still trying to go through their notes and their backup to see if they, if they carry too much money for the sheeting, or if they did only carry driving the sheets to the top of the rock, cause you wouldn't, you wouldn't drive sheeting down below the rock, that would become your, your support, so, still working through that, um.
Dennis, I'm sorry to interrupt you on that, but Jerry brought up a good point a few months ago when we talked about this, about the fact that that sheeting is reusable, but they were not costing it that way, did you come across that?
Well, yes, so that was one of the, one of the big questions is, does it need to be left in place? And does it need to be left in place everywhere if we find, there may be certain areas where we would wanna leave it in place, because when you pull it out, you'll, you'll jostle that soil, you know, if you will, on, on the opposite side of your excavation. Um, so, yes, they did, I mean, if you look at their cost, it's like seventy percent of the cost is, of this, of the project is the sheeting, so.
Yeah.
So what we are now, uh, we did hire Haley and Aldrich to help us look at the borings, to determine if the sheeting does need to be left in place, so they're working on that now, and then Joe is looking at, uh, potential alternatives um, of dig and replace and possible alternate routings, but to be honest with you folks, we haven't found any, anything uh, that's gonna save you that four, four million dollars yet, so, you know, we're plugging away and the plan is to have the draft, uh, draft memo to you, um, well ahead of your next meeting. We're, we're a couple of weeks behind due to vacations and, uh, the Eastern Turnpike and the DOT, Chris and I had quite some headaches getting that force main project started, um, it took up a lot of my time, to be honest, but we're back on track now, so.
And Dennis, does that include soil testing, the plan as presented?
Uh, I do not believe so, no, no.
Just to touch on that real quick, um, the GeoTech report was not very elaborate.
I, I didn't wanna say that, but it, there is no GeoTech report.
It's very vague, I mean, from what I got, so.
They did borings, and then they got an email from a, a boring contractor saying, you should install sheeting. It didn't really say much more than that, normally we get like this detailed report, so, that's what we've hired Haley or Aldrich to do, is to they, to take that, the soil's information and crunch those numbers to really get into the, the, um, the loadings of the soils and things like that, which are beyond, that's beyond my, my expertise, so we hired somebody to do that. But it does not include any soils testing, also, their cost estimate doesn't include, and you probably know this, cause it was set up this way, it doesn't include any paving, so. Um, you know, everything needs to be paved when you're done, so that's another additional cost on top of that, which is not included in that estimate. So, again, still working through some of the details, but so far, you know, as designed, it looks, their numbers look pretty good, um. Let me see, I did have one other note to bring up, um. Yeah, do we need to leave the sheeting in place, uh, confirm, we can't do anything trenchless? So, Chris, what was, I couldn't figure out from those plans, and, and you may be the best one to talk to, otherwise I'd have to call Cardinal, of how they were gonna reconnect the building services to the new line, I found very little information on that.
There was no information, that was gonna be determined after the fact, so that would be an a- an added cost, so, um, you know, if you remember, we had, when we had our meeting, um, we discussed leaving the line in place behind the houses that run along the creek.
Yeah, lining it, yeah, or slip.
Lining it.
Mm-hmm.
Because we, we wouldn't have to relocate those services. Some of those houses might have to end up being pump systems or, um, you know, it, it, I don't know if they'll ever be able to make it gravity out to the, the street.
Exactly, so, so basically, what, WPCA, what you may find is we may come back with you with a, a report that says the project is gonna cost more than what they say it's gonna cost, cause it doesn't include a whole bunch of things, and that's just the reality of it, unless we find, unless we can go trenchless or directional drill or micro tunnel in, in some additional areas, or remove the sheeting for at least half the job, if half the job we could remove the sheeting, you know, you'll save, you know, almost two million bucks there, so. Still working on it, uh, you'll have something prior, ahead of your next meeting.
Jerry?
You started off the conversation by saying that you're gonna be hit refusal at eight feet, but we don't know what they figured, uh, if they were figuring the whole job at twenty-five feet, I mean, you know, it, it, we have to get some idea of, to see how long refusal is gonna be in this trench at the different depths, and you know, you could be saving almost fifty percent on sheeting cost there alone.
That's correct. That's correct.
Would it be worthwhile to do boring, another set of borings?
Uh, let me take a look at how far apart they did them and, and what the profile of the ledge is, and, and yeah, I mean, that, maybe that is a recommendation, um, in our memo. The other thing too is, go ahead.
If we do more borings, we should do some soil analysis too.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, yeah.
Absolutely.
So just for the discussion, on top of that, and Dennis, this plays into you as well, um, on the Canard Street end of the project, which is the, basically the beginning, um, it was, it was considered part of the Bullard property back in the day. There is still contaminant in that area, casting sands, when we did the Metro Center project, um, they had to dispose of those casting sands, there are casting sands that are down in this area that will have to be addressed, so there's gonna be some environmental issues down there as well, so.
Yeah, I didn't know that, but thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. We were going to, part of, um, Cardinal's, um, realm was to, um, hire an LEP to do some testing and, and whatnot, but they haven't got, we haven't gotten that far, so.
Yep. Gotcha.
All right. Well, it's a good example of, of how we want to do projects going forward, which is doing extensive diligence on the front end, rather than in the middle of the project. Let's keep going.
Okay. Um, let's see. Next is, uh, status update on the funding for the Riverside Drive Siphon Project. Um, DEP is reviewing it. Uh, it's been promer, committed through the, um, DEP, um, in the Army Corps, um, and Tyne Bond is in the process of developing the bid plans. So we should get something ver, very soon. Um, then it has to go for funding and, and so forth. So, um, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to wrap that project up pretty quickly. So. The WPCA Outfall Project, um, the town attorney is reviewing the right-to-enter agreement. He has it. We have, we have a phone, and Brian and I have a phone call with him tomorrow to discuss this. Um, we got an agreement, but we want to make sure that it's, you know, good enough. As soon as we get it, um, approved, we can schedule the contractors to do the work. So. Um, they're going to go in there and do some exploratory work. Um, it should only take a couple of days to do, and then GHD has to sign off on the plan and then we can go out to fit again. So we did get an extension on the grant, um, for it, and as soon as we get this, this preliminary work done, the exploratory, we can go, um, you know, get that wrapped up. So. Um, the East Trunk Wetlands, met, from Metro Center to Kenwood, um, we're in the process of preparing an RFP to go off for engineering services, um, to get that in the works. So that should be done by, before next, uh, the next meeting. So. The wastewater treatment plant, there's no update. Um, the East Trunk Interceptor, Upper East Trunk, no, nothing on that. The Microgrid, um, Yankee Electric was issuing a new PO on that. They've submitted, they're going to submit a schedule to restart the work. Um, and Snyder Electric, who is one of the, the, they're the, the main contractor, um, they've included two change orders, um, which need to be submitted. So, um, for that work to restart. So. Bill, I don't know if you want to weigh in, if you know any more about the Microgrid. I got this information from Ed Bowman, so.
Uh, well, um, Yankee and Snyder were on site yesterday and walked us site just to look at that, and I informed them that, uh, they've done most, their trenching's almost all done and, and in, in the ground already. So any other additional excavation they have to do, they have to go ahead and, and do test borings and soil analysis, and they'll have to, uh, um, get a, get a, a, hold a tie and bond, and maybe they can piggyback on their, uh, their, um, boring sampling. Their, 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 um, excavations are very shallow.
Yeah, and I think, what, they're probably about seventy-five percent done with the conduit work?
I'd probably say all of that, if not more.
More, okay.
I think they only had a small portion by the Fire Academy and over by Conservation.
Okay. Joe?
Chris, I had asked you last month to put three additional ones, even just so we don't lose them?
Yep.
They're not here.
So I believe they were covered under, you asked for the generator project?
Eight-inch pipe on Encore and Post, the one we just talked about, and if.
Okay.
The pipe on Stratfield Road that we're going to have to address, the eight-inch pipe down by Strat, the old Stratfield Market, and then the pipelining under Ash Creek.
Yep. The, the pipelining under Ash Creek is, is the East Trunk Wetland Crossing.
Oh, it's under that one? Okay.
That's, that, that's that one. Um. And I'll add the other two, um. You, do you want, um, for the Stratfield Road, and Dennis, I don't know how we want to handle this as well. Um, I just got, uh, so just for, for, for the commission to know, um, Sacred Heart came to us today. Well, I just got a code review for the hockey rink. So that, they're going to have to come back to us for additional flow, um, for that report that they've submitted, um, prior to the MOU. Um, so I'm, I'm assuming they're going to be coming either next month or the month after, um, back to the commission for approval. The pipe in Stratfield Road has to be addressed at some point. Um, I don't know, do we want to get estimates on that? Do we want to put an RFP? Do we want to put it back to Sacred Heart to repair? Um, you know, that I don't know. So it's, it's, it's open for discussion.
Well, you, my feeling, and it's been the same, the infrastructure of the town is our responsibility. That pipe is so far away from Sacred Heart at this moment. There's so many other things, things that could connect into it. I think it's our responsibility.
It's not down by the new campus.
It's about a mile away.
Yeah, it's about.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's always been my feeling. The infrastructure should be ours.
But is the capacity there without Sacred Heart?
Yeah, there was capacity. That's the other point I was going to get to. So we did have capacity in that pipe before Sacred Heart comes on, came online. We're now, uh, you know, we're taking extra flow from Sacred Heart. So, you know.
I realize that.
Well, wait a second, if I may interrupt for a second. We, we were fine when it was GE, but now we're not fine that it's Sacred Heart?
No, this has to do with the dorms, the new dorms that they put online. So, um.
Right.
That's, that's adding extra flow to the system.
It's the additional capacity that they're going to need to build these facilities.
Yeah. So with GE alone, we were good. GE and the, um, Jewish Home, Pretty Elderly. They've since added five dorms. They're proposing a hockey rink and a nanatorium. Um, so all that, all that extra flow is, you know, is coming to our system. Hence the upgrade at the pump station.
Well, we did account for that in the design of the pump station, though, so.
Yes.
At least for the pump station.
Okay. It'll be an interesting conversation when we get to it. That's it for the projects, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. So moving on, um, we go to the status update on sewer bypasses. Were there any Mr. Norton?
Uh, there were two. Small one, relatively, uh, small and gallonage, uh, but, you know, obviously anybody passing up, uh, wanted. So, uh, one was down in Old, um, Old Post Road down in the South Court, uh, at the, um, business center, really, the center of the town there, um, with some grease, so we're trying to identify that. We did just get our new camera system, so we, we're, we're trying to get in there and see exactly where we're getting some of that grease from. The second one was our, our Gardner Drive. Um, that was a root problem, you know, in a line, uh, that has, uh, one of our manholes and, and easement that's located under a deck. And that's another thing I think that Chris and Brian are going to talk with, uh, Attorney Baldwin on tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yep.
Okay. So the Garden Drive was one to somewhere between one and fifty gallons. What was Old Post Road? I didn't see that, I didn't see that report.
Uh, that was somewhere, uh, uh, between fifty and a hundred. By the time we got out there, you know, we could see it on the shelf and around the manhole, but it had already evaporated off the ground.
And it was out there. It was very little. It wasn't, it wasn't very much. So it was, it was only a little bit along, around the curb line.
Okay. Look, in, in, uh, the middle of the summer, in the middle of a pandemic, with a substantial amount of material to review, I thank each and every one of you for, um, your service tonight and, uh, active participation. Means a lot to us. Um, for motion to, and any further comments, questions? Motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion. There are second, Nancy's second, all in favor.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you to the department. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for helping this, uh, set this up. Yeah, no problem. I'm glad it worked for everybody. So.
Yeah, I'll try to try to change my name. Good night.
All right. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.